That's what we have quoted right now. We have issues with flooding, as we all know, down in the small dog park in the summer months regarding if we're going to plan to regrade and raise the elevation and redirect the runoff flow in the amount of $7,250. Install new sod in the small dog park since last year was the large dog park. And irrigation improvements in the small dog park since last year the large dog park was taken care of. In addition to aforementioned items, four new pergolas at $13,360 and a new chain link fence with a card reader, and I'm still awaiting the quote to come back. If we're going to do all of that, the total cost would be $48,083 and or $48,083.62. Our Gateway Dog, our dog park proposed work plan for this year is to install two concrete pads at $7,813.31 in the large dog park. Installation of two pergolas at $6,680 in the large dog park. Raise elevation and regrading in the small dog park at $7,250. Irrigation improvements of $1,947 in the small dog park and installation of new sod in the small dog park at $9,900. Total would be $33,593.31. And that is a picture of my dog. I'm a dog lover. Okay?
Finally.
Finally, somebody has a dog.
That's, this is our proposed plan for, the work plan for this year for your dog park.
Now, the small side, when the grass already is in good shape. Excuse me. Do you want to let the board ask their questions?
Okay, so you've, you've worked backwards, obviously, into the $35,000 capital.
Yes.
Good for that. I'm still, the capitalism bothering me as much as what is our O and M budget to maintain it, because a lot of the problems I've heard appear to be operation related. And if we're running that at $7,500, and that's just recall of what I thought we had one time in the budget, I don't remember what it was. Steven, you got it over there?
Andy? For which?
Dog park operating budget.
For this year, well, it's roughly about 30,000, but it's got some of the similar items for kind of...
Operating or capital?
No, I'm looking at the operating there, at least for this year anyway. Sod installation, plant replacement, irrigation, maintenance repairs, and then a general dog park.
A lot of that I would have considered capital, but anyway. What's the true cost of operation and maintenance staff time, which is where we appear to have a problem, that we don't have somebody there budgeted long enough to, one, make sure that everybody that's coming in is legal, and, two, watch it for things that have been done. I don't, I don't know about the stone. I do, I do know about, I have a dog, and I do know I don't want the dog going on that crushed stone. But I, I don't know what the history was, how that happened. The issue is now needs to be corrected.
Yes, sir.
But I want to make sure that we've got the funds in here to do this stuff. I, I don't want to go and spend $35,000 and then have it fall apart because we're not operating and maintaining it, because we're just going to be right back here talking about this again. So if, if it's both a capital and an operating deal, we need to discuss both, but I'm all for listening to the public, because I don't go down there that often. The issue is, is that are any of these things here, or are these things here what the public would consider as the priority items to spend our first $35,000 on?
Mr. Tickle, if I could just ask a question.
And I'll just add on, and then Chris, you can probably summarize after all of our other comments. So first and foremost, I think, one of the things that I hope we're addressing now that we have in the past, is we've had people overseeing parks and rec, including the dog park, have had no experience managing fields, overseeing leagues, and managing facilities like dog park. But I don't, I don't know all of your background, but I do know that you have some turf management, and, and, you know, you've been around, I think, maybe leagues and some stuff in the past, and you say you're a dog lover, that's great. And I'm hoping that whatever you don't know, that you'll, you'll learn quickly, and, and that's the impression I get from Chris, that you're that, that type of person. But again, expertise has to be, you know, there has to be expertise in every role and function that we have at the organization, or else we got people doing jobs that they just, they don't know exactly how to do it. And I'm not saying that's you by any means. We're very happy to have you here, and we've heard great things. So in moving forward, I know that Chris has invested time in trying to understand more about the turf, and we've done all these things, so great. I think we're moving in the right direction. But this is a, kind of a wake-up call for us, to make sure that we've got checks and balances, if we don't have areas within our organization where we don't have oversight, or we have the right people in place. I spend some time talking with individuals that go to the dog park, because I spend a lot of time here, a lot of time up on the other side of the fence, chasing, you know, boys around on the soccer field. But what I've heard as far as primary concerns is security and access. So, one, we've got to make sure that the, the access to, to the dog park is something that's sustainable, and that it does what it's supposed to do, which is keep people out. One of the things that, that I've heard is you've got your two gates that lead into the dog park, but there's no buffers on. So one of the, you know, things that we should be considering is putting up almost the gate prior to coming into the dog park area, so you almost have two levels of security. That also will keep any, you know, heaven forbid, you're walking out the gate, your dog gets away from you, you know, so it's a little bit of containment, so.
That's the quote for the new...
So that's a front gate prior to you going in. Did you... So just something to consider, you know. The other thing is, really, it's shading. So whether it's a pergola or shading, what I'm hearing is the, the people don't, don't really, I mean, I like, I don't want to speak for you, but it, what's important is just provide shade, and shade in multiple areas, because depending on if you're a morning guy, if you attend in the mornings versus the afternoon, the sun is in different places. So we need to make sure that we're aware of where we need shade and at what point. We got nice benches out there, and, so concrete slabs to put on the benches seems like a no-brainer. I thought we had staff that was able to pour concrete and lay slabs, so if that's the case, let's put, for that use to work. The shells are absolutely, I mean, how we've kept shells in that one area for as long as we have is ridiculous. I mean, it wouldn't take much to either, you know, hire someone, or if we've got staff to go out there and literally just, you know, shovel that, I mean, I could, I could probably get a couple volunteers on a Saturday and shovel all that shells away and just replace with sod, so, I mean, that's something that has to be taken care of immediately. And then around the, the parking is another issue. We've got those allocated spaces at the end, but there's, I think it's only one sign that says dedicated parking. And again, I spent all the time with my boys on the flag football field and the soccer field, so I know that we, as, you know, parents in that area, take advantage of those parking spaces. So another thing, and, and these are low-cost things, you know, getting signs that say dedicated dog parking only, just, it may not eliminate people parking there, but at least it's something that we can put up to, to let people know, this is, this is dedicated for the, for the dog park. Because honestly, the, the times conflict, right? So when a lot of people are in the dog park in the afternoon, is the same time the leagues are kicking off, so we need to figure out better, better parking. And the last thing I had is, so the grading the grass, which you've already, you've already spoke to, which I think is great. The, I don't know about separation of the dogs. That's something I'm just not knowledgeable about. I thought the, the original intent was to keep separation where separation is needed. My dog is, he's a Wheaton Terrier, he's like 35 pounds. He loves to play with the little dogs, he loves to play with the big ones. So I'm in one of the situations that I could probably go on either side, but I do have my neighbor who's got a bigger boxer that comes out there, and he's a very playful dog, but he, he can come across as being a little aggressive. So I, I think we need to figure out what the rules and responsibilities are, and I think owners know their dog and whether they can play with big dogs or not, but I think we've got to be very clear on what the rules are, so we don't get in situations where, you know, a dog might be aggressive to smaller dogs, or smaller dogs aggressive to bigger dogs, whatever the case is. So I think that's one of the things that we'll have to address, but other than that, I think the, the, we have to, I think with you in place, then we'll set up a maintenance schedule and routine, you know, so we can keep main, keep the updates. And as far as the cost, you know, I don't know the numbers of how many non-residents versus residents, so I can't really tell you what, what the revenue is generated, but that revenue should automatically go back into, into the dog park on an annual basis for continued improvement. So again, that's, I'll kind of yield the rest of my time to whoever else wants it.
Mrs. Flaherty wanted to make a comment.
Okay, we have forty...
And then Mr. Guy.
We have $40,000 in the budget for the dog park.
Is that operating or?
It's under the operating budget, general OO1. Okay? I have addressed some of these same issues with Chris. Okay, I, and the pergola, those, that's it, whatever they are, should have been bought in the nineteen, 2019 budget, according to, is that true?
Eighteen.
Okay, so those are already bought, as far as we know, okay? I also was with Freddie and Al, and we talked about putting around the tree some kind of...
Plastic foam?
Yeah, something to, so that the dogs wouldn't go into the trees in second, so that when landscape load, they wouldn't go into the trees either. So that would be probably helpful. They have had trouble with, okay, they have had trouble with the car a lot of the times. As they said, people lift them up. It's really easy, it doesn't take much, you know, power to do it. I know that there is, Doug, two, two doors. When you go into the dog park, we have them, we go into the other...
Right, yeah, there's, there is two doors, yeah.
So I don't know if you want to put a key for both doors when you do it, or when you redo that with the chain link fence, or, I don't know, that would make it harder for residents to get in. And I also have talked to Chris about increasing the fees, because they came to me and told me that they did mine, and I made the suggestion that if we did increase the fees, the other half, like from 25 to 50, the other 25 could be put aside just for the dog park. Because I know they did redo the, the sign, and Manscaped came in and cut the bushes so that they could keep their sign, so, but I do thank you.
Can I add, can I add on to yours?
I'm at the chair.
Can I add, can I add on?
Two minutes.
It's only gonna be two minutes, so if you have to, because I can't remember where, you have to use the key for the first door and the second door?
No, just the first door.
Okay, just the first door and the second door is just a lock?
It's just this way.
Yeah, okay. That's it. Thank you. I tried to get permission. Trying to obey the rules here.
Mr. Guy.
Glenn, would you go back one, one slide, please? How about two slides? Anyway, that's not, we're not getting to where I wanted to get to, anyway. There we go. These items all seem to be badly heated. I'm not hearing any boos, so I think I'll write on that. Can you give me an idea of how soon, this is October 17, how soon these things are going to be installed and available for our residents to enjoy?
I would hope later than mid-December.
Mid what?
December.
December, are you saying too much?
Well, if we pour the pergolas, if we put the concrete pads for the pergolas, it requires 30 days of concrete curing before we can put any kind of structure on top of it for stability and for strength. So it would be 30 days after concrete was poured for the pergolas to be installed.
You know, I haven't poured any concrete for a long time, but I don't remember having cured for 30 days.
Just 3,000 or 4,000, I don't think. This is getting me in danger. There is no way in hell. They put, they poured it over at the Country Club, and they started erecting the building in two days.
Those were the recommendations that I was given.
By who?
Vanessa Contracting, 30 days of curing of concrete.
What were they using, something you get from Home Depot?
You see what we're feeling, we've all, we've all got issues, and we've all got other items that we're trying to deal with, and I'm sure glad to have you folks here to educate us, me especially, on when this needed, but would you do everything you can recently to move that up faster than too much?
I think, I think, I'm just going to guess that the 30-day cure time has something to do with warranty, that they, that with warranty of their work.
Yes.
If you don't allow that 30-day cure, and something goes bad with the slab, they're going to say, who told you so? So I'm just, that was just a guess, because I know how, when you said 30 days, I knew that you, you being told that was for a reason. Okay, and is there more to your presentation?
Yes, ma'am. We have Gateway Soccer. Soccer park complex, what is work planned is... Background on soccer complex is the PA system is barely functional and suffers intermittent failures at this time. Lines are broken in multiple areas and places as a result of pintarization over the years. An inability to shut off the water in sections to the park requires manual shut-offs. Our work plan, proposed work plan would be installing a new PA system at $11,435. Installation of one conduit line for the PA system done by Gateway Services staff. An installation of two three-inch brass globe master valves plus battery-operated valve controllers at $1,528.68 with installation done by Gateway Services staff. Total of $12,963.68. Gateway Commons Pool, background, outdated and malfunctioning equipment. Our current pH buffering system isn't working properly, our chlorinating system isn't working properly, which requires us to constantly check and adjust chemicals. The vacuum system is also outdated and not very well at its best. Pool motor is constantly running at full output, potentially reducing the lifespan of the component by half. The solution would be to install a variable flow drive, VFD, on the motor. Installation, here's our work plan, would be for this year, be installation of two Wi-Fi connected chemical feeders for the pools, $8,796. Installation of a Wi-Fi connected VFD, $2,654.13. Installation of Wi-Fi spin disc water quality tester, which is a very great tester, is Installation of circuit interruptors on electrical components done by Gateway staff, necessary for safety feature. Robotic vacuum, $6,150. Staff training, $750. And electrical components for the tie-in done by Gateway, which is $1,098.14.
Chris, do we have this, or Steven, do we have these two in our CIP for both the pool? At least $20,500 for this year budgeted in the capital improvement plan for the pool, and I forgot the other, $14,000 for the soccer complex, I don't remember the number, one go back one slide, $12,000?
Yeah.
Do we have money in the CIP for both of those?
Not specific to pools, there is funds in there that can be moved around. If you look under Parks and Recs, there's $135,000 in total under the capitals, capital under Parks and Recs.
So it, so it could be moved to do it?
It can be moved there, yeah, especially if, if the dog park, if there is $35,000 in the operating, if that's used to cover the dog park, the $35,000 in here could be then used to cover the ground, but it would be sufficient to operate.
So what do we need a motion to do all three of these? Or is it in the budget, you just do it?
Mrs. Flaherty. Okay, we have $30,000 in the OO1 fund for the soccer field.
That's operating, yes.
Okay, so that will cover soccer field. And we do have, let's see, like $4,500 in the, for the pool, under the OO1 fund, for the filter. I do have a question, too. How much would it cost to get the right, new regular vacuum instead of a robotic vacuum?
Well, the current situation that we have right now with the vacuum is that our staff cannot reach to the middle of the pool very well, so we'd have to buy more new equipment, more new hoses, vacuum heads, filters. The robotic vacuum comes with its own filter screen in it, that picks up micron particles all the way from algae and sticks and whatever blows into the pool. It also reduces the cost of our maintenance, or our staff having to clean the pool. We can just drop it in at night, it's programmed, and it goes and runs the pool all night long. They come in in the morning, pull it out, put it away.
Okay, and do you have to change the filters on the vacuum?
No, ma'am, we do not. On, on the vacuum currently, the one that's in the pool, yes.
Yes.
Three times a year, two, two times a year, and with the robotic vacuum, we would, would not be replacing it, has its own filter bag, and all we do is just take that and empty it, and wash it, and put it back in.
The recommendation is to approve the expenditure for the improvement plan at the dog park and the soccer complex.
What about pool?
Pool's not here.
All right, I'm here.
I was going to say, I'd make a motion to do all three.
I'll second that.
And transfer Steven suggested.
Since we didn't have the pool on the agenda, should I ask you?
I see it on my agenda. I approved the pool complex H. It has...
Okay, I'm just looking at G, so that's, that's...
I think you double check to make sure I read them, you know, I'm, I'm...
So my motion is to approve G and H.
Okay. Three G and three H. And the, the second, you're okay with that? I don't care about that. Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I, I just want to make sure that we're tackling the most important things, especially on the dog park. So I'd say the, if the budget is approved, if you, maybe if you go and look at that, you know, based on what you've heard today, and some of the recommendations, if, if there was a need to alter or to resequence what you're doing, I would just say that's something that staff should be doing. So we agreed to the expenditure. I would say how, you know, if, if there's things that you need to lift and shift, because the shells aren't on here, you know, some of the other pieces, I'm fine with him making modifications based on what, the feedback that he gets, based on priority, if everyone agrees.
I agree to that.
The shells have got to go.
Shells have got to go.
I'd agree to that revision.
Well, we don't know how much it's going to cost, but...
As long as it stays within the...
Yeah.
That, that can't be that much.
We've got money budgeted, so if he can do it within budget, I only think that has to come back to us.
And I got no problem if, if we set the amount for whatever, and Glenn says, you know what, I can do these, I can do additional, you know, shading, I can get concrete, I can do all these things, and I may need to come back to the board for an additional $4,000 if there's, you know, in order to complete the list.
Yeah.
So, Ruth.
A second. Okay, we got a motion in a second to do three G and H? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have fun, you've got work to do.
And I would, one last thing, if we could get some regular updates on, on that, just so we can make sure that we keep the, the fine people that attend today informed.
We'll be glad to help remove the shells.
No, no, we, that's what I'm...
I mean, we've, we've done it, so we can, we painted the bulletin board, we've raked, we've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a quick comment.
Yes, you may.
I'll, I'll agree with, and say that a lot of that is from neglect and time constraints, and that's one of the reasons we hired Glenn for Parks and Rec, to be able to address these things.
Thank you, Glenn.
You know, directly, and he's a dog guy, I'm a cat guy, I see her better than his hands.
Glenn, I have a leaf in my... It's the guy that my...
Yeah, that's, that, that shell area, it's concreting right over it.
It's your freedom.
Yeah, it's your freedom.
And then I'm sure one of the suggestions, I've heard from some of the speakers, that they're engaging, I'll call it, in self-help activities out there, which is always commendable, but I think typically what you'll see with governmental bodies, if you have a group of individuals that are dedicated to a particular facility, such as a park or a, like an informal or formal fringe group, and that group then engages in volunteer activities. But typically, those require approval from the district and hold harmless, because people are well-intended, what they're doing. I know I'm sounding overly legalistic, but I guess that's my role, but the people who are painting and raking and doing items like that, I think that's something that needs to be coordinated with the staff and have a volunteer release form for that. And it's, once again, it's always a good indicator of the involvement of the community and taking pride and ownership in their community. But there are groups like in Naples, there's a Friends of Lady Burford Beach, there's Friends of the Parks, there's Friends, and those groups are volunteer groups, and they do sign the waivers, and there's coordination between staff and those groups, and it develops a good relationship over time. So I would suggest that that more formal protocol be utilized in the future by the, by those folks who are taking upon themselves to do those good things.
And I think now that they, that the, the dog people know they have a dog person that's in charge of the park, that they'll be coordinating with him, they'll be working with him.
My goodness, Glenn, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Glenn? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Glenn.
Okay, we'll move back up to three, oh, wanting to do staff reports? Yeah, we'll go back to staff reports. District management reports.
If you don't mind, we do have folks here from Iberia Bank to the person I am, if we could bring them up.
Certainly.
And it's really a discussion that was initiated by Supervisor Flaherty, looking at, is there any opportunity to save banking and service fees? Do you want to come on and dress yourself?
Sure. Well, good afternoon, my name is Brandon Box, and I'm the area president for Iberia Bank here in Lee County. I do appreciate y'all having us in today, and I want to introduce some of our staff, which is the Relationship Management Team for Gateway Services Community District. We've worked with you guys for about 12 years now, and it's been a great partnership. I know we get to interact with Chris and his staff a lot more on a daily basis than kind of interacting with all of you, but we're excited to tell our story a little bit today. So here with me today, we've got Teresa Toscano, who's our Treasury Management Officer, and is responsible for all the technology, cash coming in, cash leaving Gateway Services Community Development District. We've got Beth Hendry, who's our Senior Vice President, Commercial Relationship Manager, so she is the Account Officer. And we've got Julie Salozzi, who's the Office Manager down on Daniels, and you may see her in this office bringing checks to and from on occasion with the staff. So I have to fuss at whoever put us on the agenda as Iberia Bank fees. I think it should have been Iberia Bank savings, because we do, this all came about because a couple of months ago, I guess, we do relationship reviews on an annual basis. We sit back and look at the account structure of our larger relationships, and because this is a long-time relationship, accounts have been kind of layered on, layered on, layered on. Services have come and gone over the years between different management companies, across staff. So we went back, we took a look, I, one of the board members, I'm not sure which one it was, but made a comment about maybe some services that you guys no longer use. And a couple of months ago, or maybe a month or so ago, we sent over a proposal that was restructure some of the account types, that would maybe save some money for the organization. And I'm not sure if those have been shared with all of you up to this point, or if you would like for us to handle that with the management company and staff. But I, I did want to take a quick second before we get into that to see, I don't know if everybody's familiar with Iberia Bank and who we are, but we're a small regional bank headquartered in Louisiana, and we're 133 years old, we're publicly traded on the NASDAQ, and we're five-star Bauer rated, which is the highest rating of safety and soundness for a bank. We're investment-grade rated from S and P. But one of our niches, Florida's our largest market for the company, and one of our niches is what we call association solutions. And so we have about 3,000 accounts throughout Florida, all with associations, community development districts, and that's a combination of firms through property management companies, as well as self-managed associations, condo towers, things like that. So we've enjoyed a lending bond relationship with you guys, as well as the depository side, and it's an area we feel like we've got a great servicing team and we're really good at. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain questions, the team would be happy to entertain questions, and I guess we'd look for some guidance from y'all on how you would like us to best kind of navigate those account changes moving forward, whether it's with the property management company, Chris and his team, and answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Banks? Mr. Guy?
The numbers that I see on the left, where it says actual, it says XX 8362, I presume that's the, the number of the, of the account?
Yes, sir, we keep the first... Yes sir, we keep the first X number of digits confidential.
When you talk about the proposed fees with 65 basis points, how, how philosophically does that differ from what we, from what we have brought down?
Sure, so I'll let Teresa Toscano kinda talk about the, some of the terminology there and where it was and where it's going.
Sure, um, good afternoon.
You wanna use this just in case it's being reported?
Good afternoon. Um, today, um, regarding your earnings credit rate, so I, I just wanna make sure I explain what that means for those of you who may not be familiar. An earnings credit rate is essentially a rate based off of your, um, average collective balances that you keep with the bank to help offset any service charges based off of the services that you utilize with the bank.
Is it based on LIBOR plus?
It is a stated rate with Iberia Bank, so it's not based on any sort of index. So our proposal is to actually increase that, um, from what you have today. And I believe we've sent analysis statements, or we can provide those analysis statements. Um, I know, uh, the folks on staff and the property management company do have access to those every month. They post on the 20th of every month, um, directly, so we're happy to provide any sort of backup information that you would need, but we're, we're looking to increase that in order to help provide, um, increased savings.
Sounds good, Ray. Thank you ma'am.
Mrs. Flaherty?
I'm the one, the last, this, to be looked at, because when I brought it to somebody else, they told me that it was extremely high, that the fees were high. So, um, I really did want an explanation of all the fees and how they're, they're determined.
Our, you know, on behalf of the entire team of the bank, we are all about full disclosure. We never want to try and hide anything, and we, we always look to provide extra savings. We, that's why we do an annual review, 'cause we want to provide a checkup to you and your organization, um, at least, um, at minimum on an annual basis. So, um, you know, that's, I think, what the intent of that exercise was to provide. And, um, I think there are some tweaks that can be made in order to provide greater cost savings, um, which we will also recommend and we can follow up with in greater detail, um, to suggest to you. But if there is something that you would like us to look at based off of feedback you've gotten from our competitors, we wanna know that as well. So, we'd be happy to entertain you providing that information to us.
Couple comments.
Uh, so, all of our fees are generally lower than our competitors. I mean, if you look at any of the bigger banks, we're substantially lower and just kinda off the, call it off-the-rack pricing. We actually provide, this is an exception rate that I personally approve. This is, what's our standard rate, 25 basis points? So, it's almost three times the, the standard rate. Uh, but that being said, there's always things that you guys can do and that we can help advise on, whether it be converting more to technology versus paper checks, things like that, uh, that may provide additional cost savings. Uh, one thing I will say that's not included on this is, we've, and we've gotten our hands slapped a couple of years now, but we provide an extremely good interest rate on some deposit accounts, the ICS accounts, which are fully FDIC insured. And one of our predecessors locked that in for a very long period of time, and it's been paying well above, about two times, it's the highest in the company, about two times the market average for those FDIC ICS accounts. So, holistically, um, I think it's, it's a very good deal for the organization, but we would be more than happy, we've got, we have what's called the analysis statements, which show the exact number of transactions each month, the exact charge per transaction for whatever service you're utilizing, and then it kinda has a monthly total, and then it kinda shows this calculation here. And we'd be more than happy to, um, kinda bring that to a future board meeting and review it, or provide any sort of, um, kinda communication as necessary to review those.
Well, Mr. Blum did give me some, um, monthly statements.
Okay, good.
That I could go over, and we just discussed them.
Okay. But happy to, if there's any in particular that you are uncomfortable with, we, we're happy to talk about those.
I just thought it was a little high when I approached somebody else. I guess, from where I come from in Connecticut.
Sure.
It's, just seems, and the people I had dealt with up there.
Yeah.
It was just like twice the amount, yep.
Wow. Well, one other thing to consider, that earnings credit goes towards your operating accounts, and because you guys have a big chunk of deposits into interest-bearing accounts that we're paying interest on, you're earning 2% or so on those bigger accounts, that's a higher amount than the 65 basis point earnings credit rate. So you could take those funds and put them into your operating account, and it would reduce the, the service charge fees, but obviously the organization would be worse off, excuse me, um, because you'd be, uh, pay no fees but earning less interest. So the, kinda the net-net would make sense, but, uh, we're happy to, to kinda consider that to the extent you guys wanna explore.
I just wanna thank you for bringing this, because I know it took time, and I do appreciate it.
Absolutely. We've enjoyed the partnership. We always participate in the community day through the sponsorships or different things, and, uh, Chris and his team are great to deal with on a weekly basis. So, we do appreciate the staff as well, so pass that along.
Thank you ma'am. Do the, does the limit of $250,000 applied for FDIC coverage on these accounts?
Well, a couple things. So, you guys use a product called ICS, Insured Cash Sweep, which is, uh, it's an IBM-owned company, Promontory, but essentially what they do is they get member banks around the country, and when you deposit money into those accounts with Iberia Bank, it disperses them in $250,000 increments around the country. So, the majority or the big bulk savings funds that you guys have are in those accounts, and they're all FDIC insured. Uh, we also, because you're a public entity, the state of Florida has collateralization requirements, and it's, it's different in every state, but we do abide by, and we have your accounts in those public funds account types. So you're secured, I think it's 20% collateralization is the, is the government requirement.
What that is, Mr. Guy, is they're, they are QPD, a Qualified Public Depository, and that always shows up in our audits every year, and you're required to keep your funds in a Qualified Public Depository. And it's a, and it's collateralization, it's a pool of all the banks involved in it.
Florida.
Pardon?
In Florida.
In Florida.
Yep.
To provide the, the assurance that there is no issue with you getting your money.
Yep.
Put it that way.
My agenda says that Steven Blum, with him for lunch, will also provide comments to this proposal.
Sure. Uh, you know, I think we covered a lot of it, so I'll be very brief. But this is really only a very small piece of the whole puzzle. And, and as mentioned, you have several of the ICS accounts that are earning well over 2%. Um, you know, most of the other banks are like 1.75 or lower in terms of what they're able to earn. So, the, really the truth of the matter is, is that we keep a very minimal amount in the accounts that you're looking at, that earn, you know, the, the VPS credit. It just isn't feasible, it's better to put the money into the money market or the ICS to earn the higher interest. So in terms of what you're looking at here, this is still would be an additional savings, which would even, would not compromise or affect the interest income that you earn on these other accounts. So this is a good deal. Now, moving forward, we still are gonna take a look and see if there are any services that we don't need, you know, but.
Like wires, I think.
Wires was one we've been looking at. But i- in general, when you compare the fees to other districts, you're always gonna be, have higher fees, just by the nature of, you know, collecting water, that the water, you know, revenue that way, and that's basically because it's a transactional fee. So we look at to try and get rid of the services that are not required, and then we do take a look and try and compare, you know, what is it per check, per deposit, and compare that to other banks. In all cases, again, this is, uh, gonna be a savings to the district, and it's kinda, basically it's a good deal.
Now, in full disclosure, there's been a couple of rate drops, we haven't done anything. Um, as rates continue to decline, we'll have to huddle up and see, kinda what we need to do there. We've been hesitant to do anything with you guys because of our relationship. Um, that being said, across the industry, deposit rates are declining, as I'm sure y'all are seeing in your personal accounts. Uh, but hopefully there's not a rate drop for a while, although we expect one or two maybe this coming, rolling 12 months, so. Uh, but we'll keep in close contact. Again, we're not trying to do anything, uh, behind closed doors, we want it to all be a group decision.
Yeah, and, and there is a page in your financials each month, uh, it happens to be Agenda Page 105, where we list each account, and there is a column that shows you what the, what it's, you know, the yield is or the earnings at month. And you can see, you know, it's, it's 2.08 that we're showing here, but you also have CDs that are earning well over that. So again, this is really just one piece of a, a very bigger puzzle.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience. I know you sat through a long, a long meeting.
That's okay.
Long meeting.
I have a dog too. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
And if any questions arise, please feel free to contact us. Thank you.
Thank you.
More, more just like FYI introduction, and they haven't been here in a while, so we wanted them to.
I'm, is our district engineer still here?
Come here.
There you are. I'm sorry, you were sitting over there before.
I did, I'm in the school chairs.
I'll go ahead and. So that, so that we may allow you to go home sooner rather than later. Let's go to the district engineer.
Okay.
I understand you drew the shorts.
Well, Tyler has strep throat, so, uh, either come here or stay at the office and get sick, so. Uh, for the record, Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Um, keep it quick. Uh, just an update on the lake bank restoration project. The plan has been to move forward with the first six lakes and get those, uh, constructed this upcoming dry season, which includes probably is, uh, Lake 83.
Thank you.
That is still the plan. Um, uh, we should be moving along for SRF approval in February. And that's it for updates, so if anyone has any questions, I'll do my best answer.
What about the LDO for the first set of lakes?
Currently, that's not in our scope of work right now. I know in the past Gateway has done it, we've done it some other times, I'm not really sure what is in the works right now for that. But we have time for that right now, so we're not running out of time to get that done.
I'm surprised, because I thought that, I thought we had submitted that, that they needed a maintenance plan and we were submitting a.
Are we talking, we're not talking about these upcoming?
No.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
These are the first set of lakes that we had to go back in retrospect.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, yeah, yeah. Um, as, I, I don't know where we are on that. I know Tyler had to go back and forth with the plans and work on the surveying data, but, um, I, I think the county signed off on it, I'm not, I'm not sure. I think on our end, we're, we're all set. I'm sorry, Ken.
That's okay. I just thought I'd ask.
Sorry to confuse you.
Make sure that at the next meeting, Tyler brings that up.
Yeah. Any other questions for?
Well, let's, I would have as a follow-up, and let's not wait until next meeting, let's have someone from Tetra Tech shoot a memo over to Chris, letting him know we're wrapped with that. I don't think we have to wait two weeks or not long for that.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
I'll get with Danny and Tyler in the morning, and then we'll send an email to you guys.
But our, our, I guess I should ask, if Tyler's not gonna be available for, we usually have a Friday morning conference call after the board meeting. If Danny's out of town, till when?
Um, he can probably, one of them should be able to call in tomorrow.
Yeah, I think Danny sent the invite out today for the call.
Okay, I didn't see it. Thank you. Alright. So we'll, we'll ask about.
Okay.
The LDO. I ask every time, so it won't be a surprise.
Alrighty.
So, thank you for coming in, and if nobody else has any questions, we'll let our district engineer go home and head there.
I didn't address the question I had, because I was waiting for him, under my comments, remember?
Okay.
Do you want me to get up?
Yes.
The question is, have you guys worked on the permitting application for lowering the structure? And is that gonna affect?
The timeline of where you're planning to start that pond?
So I know Danny's been working with South Florida on that whole process. We had the staff gauge installed, I guess, through conversation between Danny and South Florida, they wanted some, you know, measurements being recorded to develop, you know, validate lowering the structure. Um, I'm not sure where that is right now.
Pat? Question on that. I, the, the whole deal on that pond weir, is the issue associated with the wetland?
Yes.
So, if the wetland goes away and it is a, what did you call it? A bu- a something, a bu- upland? Is an upland under the same deal as far as the water?
Nope.
Okay, so we could lower the weir and not be restrained by it being a upland?
No, and I think the board made the direction to wait till the full hydraulic study was done and presented, until they started working on the actual analysis to lower the weir, and they're, uh, they installed a staff gauge, and then they're tracking water levels in it right now. But there, I don't believe there's any engineering and permitting that's moving forward with that.
But the only thing that's involved is the, is the movement of water, and so we have to have a hydraulic head to be able to do that water, so we're only gonna be able to go down to the elevation of the pond that's downstreaming. We're not gonna go any lower. So I mean, it's inches is all we're talking. So if we could drop it a foot, uh, I still see that the hydraulic deal is that big of a deal on it. I think the bigger deal is make sure that we don't have a problem with the wetland.
I thought to improve the quality of the water in that lake we were planning on, uh, as soon as the wetland went away.
That's the argument.
That we would, we would submit the permit to lower that, to get the permission from South Florida Water Management to lower that, in conjunction with doing the lake.
My impression was they were waiting till the hydraulic study was totally done, because they needed that downstream information from the hydraulic study to be able to lower that.
Here's another question for tomorrow.
I, the water, the water level never goes, uh, down there to where we could do a measurement, that's the problem. Uh, it, it never gets over the weir. So, I don't know, I hope it's not, I hope that's not the case, because that could take time.
Okay, I'm just gonna fill in a few things. The board didn't make a motion and approve not waiting for the hydraulic studies, because I think that's what you brought up the last time, and I believe Mark had made the motion and it passed unanimously not to wait for the hydraulic studies. So that's one. Two, waiting for the wetland, you're gonna be waiting forever, because you're not applying for the permit to modify that. So, seeing.
Well, that's gone away. I mean, I don't think we.
We still have to apply, B, I mean, the CED has to still apply for a part, permit modification for that, and he has not done such a thing. So, waiting for an answer, you're not gonna get an answer for something that you haven't formally applied for. That's what I wanna make sure that we understand.
Sounds like you've got some topics for tomorrow.
Yes. And, and, and the motion that was made, in addition to not waiting for that hydraulic, was to, once the permit for that wetland was sent, it was to be sent in conjunction with lowering the control level, and that's why, within a few weeks from that meeting, we did put the staff gauge here, which also concerned me, because I did ask staff, who was the person in charge of checking and how often they were checking the measurement, because, to my knowledge, it was just a stick with, or it looked like a ruler, I thought it was something digital, but it's not. So it did require staff to go and monitor those, and I don't know, and staff here did not know who was the person in charge of checking that. So as far as I know, that piece of wood is over there, but nobody checked.
You can imagine that.
We aren't doing anything with a staff gauge to know it was installed.
Who installed it?
Tetra Tech did.
You've been monitoring it?
No, we weren't directed to monitor. We were there to install.
Congratulations, you got a stick in your ass.
Thank you. And what concerns me is that I brought it up when I realized that, and I offered, because there's a camera right there, and, and I said, listen, if you need it, I just need to let the homeowner know that to activate a camera at a better angle, so I can just give you the footage, so you can really have good data. That's yours.
Check it out.
That's a good idea.
I, I'm, I'm making notes, and I will be asking these questions of Danny on the phone call tomorrow. Anything else for Ty, uh, not Tyler, sorry, Steven?
We're going with Tyler.
I'm getting, I'm getting my engineers confused. Thank you.
Alright guys, have a good night.
Have a good day.
Dinner.
Okay, uh, district management report.
I had, uh, two things, and in consideration of time, one thing is, uh, Timber Creek, um, coming up, will be the, uh... Will be the Board of County Commissioners hearing on the blasting application. I did receive a petition from about 300 homeowners opposing that for a variety of reasons, at the hearing examiner's hearing, three people showed up, I think Flavi was there and two other residents. But the hearing is coming up, and I know the residents would like the board to oppose it or send me to say something in opposition to it.
Number six.
Number six.
Nine thirty.
And there's, you know, a lot of significant issues, they have about a 700-foot buffer zone to keep the blasting away, the time constraints. I think the developer had about two consultants for each resident that showed up, and they basically are saying there's no impacts to facilities. I think from their end, it's an economic decision, it's certainly a lot cheaper to blast that rock out of the ground than go beat it out. And they're assuring that nothing will happen, but there's a lot of opposition from the communities along their Cypress Cave, Bristol Park, and Magnolia.
Will they sponsor a dog park in return?
Only a cat park. Only a cat park.
So, if the board would like, I could attend that hearing and make a statement on behalf of the.
It's the hearing examiner.
No, it's the Board of County.